Is on Zoom with us.
You can definitely put stuff there if you need to.
Oh, thank you so much.
Hey Liz, you think Mel's not coming?
I'll come down there then.
Was it an odd Wendy just wants to go home, flip your heels? I was telling Frank, I feel like we're in the Twilight Zone. Three days, boom, boom, boom.
Thanks, everybody, for coming to yet another study session tonight. We have a number of departments to review and I want to make sure. I think you may have met Dave Forrest, our new planning director, and Eunice Moore, our director of HR. But if you haven't, this is here they are. And Ed Brusinski, Chuck Nelson, you know, the mayor, you know me, Liz Allen, Michael Keys, Mo Troop and Jasmine Flores. And Mel Witherspoon is not here tonight. So Lisa, are you going to start or Renee, do you want to start on the mayor's office or how do you want to do the presentations?
I think Renee's going to start.
I was going to let the mayor, I was going to let the mayor make a few opening remarks.
Yeah, just very briefly, we've been working hard on this budget. We think it's very good. We think it's solid, the way we've done it. And we're here to answer any questions you've got. Renee prepared a very good overview of it. And again, any issues you see, any questions, we welcome them. And if we, if we, if there's a place we can cut, we will. But I honestly believe we've put a lot of work into this, months of work. And I believe it's, it's good. But again, if you can find something at a place we can save some money, we're open to listening to that. With that, I'll turn it over to Renee.
Okay, sorry I couldn't be there with all of you, but as you can probably hear, I'm still passing through COVID here. So just, you know, we're, we're going over these four specific departments because there's a lot between these departments. And the staff will be working together very closely. And so we wanted to present it all at the same time. If you can go to the next slide. Over the past year, we've been working very closely with Strategic Consulting Partners, Jim Fiorenzo, and of course, the Bloomberg Harvard Group, looking at our operations and our transparency and how we're, how, you know, how we're moving forward and trying to analyze where our gaps are. And so what became very apparent from all three was that we needed a communications department. And the recommendation was for a department of four to six people. We knew we weren't going to be able to bring on four to six people. And so we started to look at who in the city is responsible for communicating or doing community outreach. And, and how can we pull them together into their own department and, and hire a director that will then create a team that can move forward on, on internal and external messaging strategy? And I'll get to that in a second. The other thing was increasing the HR department, which was severely understaffed. That came up and Eunice Moore will speak to this. That came up in both a 2019 study and in the two studies that were done this year. And then expanding the capacity of the planning department. You know, as, as you all know, I think by now in January of 2020, we released Activating Our Vision. We set 26 key performance indicators, KPIs. And the plan was to measure our success and to report out on it regularly. And then COVID hit two months later. And so we never got back to measuring outcomes, doing data analysis to see if what we're doing is working. Same goes for the ARP funding and for our citizen response center. You know, we know the comments that we're getting, complaints, issues, they're being logged in, but there's no data analysis. And so we're really looking to move into 2023 with a much more data-informed strategy. Next slide, just briefly on the mayor's office. I, from page 20, I just kind of pasted in what we did here with our expenditures between 2022 and 2023. We reduced almost all of our line items to, to save some funding. And, and so that we could create at least a little bit of a budget for the communications department. And so we ended up with about a little over 8,000 in savings. And if you turn to the next page, all of the mayor's staff received 2% increases. And then in addition to that, there were two positions in our department, the administrative assistant and the mayor's administrative assistant and my executive assistant, who were severely underpaid in relation to other assistants in the city, but in relation to all employees in the city. And it was one thing that was mentioned by Strategic Consulting Partners and Jim Fiorenzo in terms of being a pay equity issue. And so what we were budgeting was an additional $5,000 for each of them. So in 2022, the administrative assistant's salary was 35,880. And the 2% increase took her to 36,590. And so then adding an extra 5,000 would put her to 41,590. And the executive assistant's 2022 salary was 32,988, with 2% increase would be 33,657. And the extra 5,000 would take her to 38,657. If you look at, you know, through the budget, assistants in other departments are earning anywhere from 45 to 55. And so we thought it was important to start to attack that pay equity issue and, and give a couple of increases there, which we had offset by the cuts that I just mentioned, but also some other cuts that I'm going to talk about at the end. Moving on to the next slide, the, the role of the communications director is a critical role. You know, to this point, Frank and I have been trying to do the best that we can on communications, but we, we've been severely understaffed for a municipality our size. And so this new communications director would take on the role of serving as the liaison to the news meeting, media, also providing leadership and strategic direction to make sure that the communications that we're putting out there are accurate, effective, timely and consistent. You know, right now, like I said, we have several people who are communicating things to the public, but it's not always, it's, it's disparate, it's fragmented. We don't have anybody who's setting the internal or external messaging strategy and then having everybody put it out in the, you know, to their respective audiences. This person would plan and organize all the press events. We could do community forums and focus groups, which we've not been able to do, communicate city initiatives, but also the resources and the services that we have and build community awareness about what's available. This person would also coordinate with other departments, senior management and staff on storytelling. President Allen mentioned yesterday that we have a lot of great stories to tell about the things that we're doing and, and the transformation that's occurring, but we don't have the capacity to communicate that right now. And then I already mentioned the internal and external messaging strategy. And if you go to the next page, you know, we, we don't have an internal messaging strategy at all. There's just no time. And so this person would work on preparing an employee newsletter, communicating with city council. I know that's often been an issue that we're not getting the word to you in a timely manner. And it's just really a matter of not having enough hours in the day. This person would also work with the team on drafting the social media posts and updating the website. So we're going to be working on revamping the website. We have an RFP out there. And, you know, we're really looking at making that much more accessible and making sure that things are communicated in such a way that, that people can, can find them more easily. This person will also be coordinating and creating all of the communications assets. So the annual calendar, the Parks and Rec guide, recruitment materials for police and fire, any reports, proposals, studies or plans. They'll manage the departmental budget. And then they would oversee the community liaisons, the social media and citizen response. And if you go to the next page, I can kind of show you exactly what that looks like. As I mentioned, you know, we have several people that are doing community outreach. But what we haven't had is kind of a, a message that's put together that everybody, so that everybody's communicating the same thing. We're all running in a million different directions. And so everybody's trying to get the word out the best they can. And they're all getting the word out to their own populations. So, you know, the community liaisons have their populations that they talk to. So on social media, we're talking to oftentimes a completely different population and getting input, right? So the liaisons are getting input and gathering information. We're getting information on social media. And then the citizen response center is getting information too. That's not being analyzed to determine where our gaps are in communications and what we need to be doing a better job at. We just don't have the time to do that. So again, all of these folks try to connect residents to city services, programs and resources, but we know we're not reaching enough people because we hear all the time, even though maybe we've talked about something five, six times. You know, as we've been out, like for instance, with the Love Your Block program, really doing grassroots outreach, we hear from people, they have no idea about the city's resources, the resources that are available through the redevelopment authority for the city of Erie. And we want to make sure that people have access to them. That's the whole point. We're trying to, we're trying to help people. So we need a better strategy for getting the word out. These, these folks also oversee some of our external advisory councils. Again, if we all had the same information, then we're sharing the same information to our advisory councils. And then we can get information back and we can use that as we move forward. Holding community forums is something we really haven't been able to do in, well, we couldn't during COVID. But even in, in recent, in recent months, we haven't been able to do that. And I'll, and I'll get into that a little bit more on the next, I think it's the next slide. Yeah. Promoting the authorities' boards and commissions. You know, these, these are just things like everybody's working on the same stuff, but everybody's trying to get the word out on their own. And so it'd be great if we had an actual plan, communication strategy, somebody that's drafting all that. And then everybody just has to push that same message out to make sure that we're being consistent and accurate. In terms of the forums, you know, I, I just, I want to mention that the, you know, we have all of these, all these things that we funded, you know, through ARP. And, you know, people say, well, what are you funding? Well, there's no place that we can send them to show them exactly where the funding has gone. I mean, we have those big buckets, you know, from the very beginning. And the information's all public because you guys have approved all of it. It's all been on the agendas. But for somebody to have to go through the agendas and see where all the money's been spent would be an enormous undertaking. And so, you know, this is something that we've been trying to work on and having the additional staff will enable us to do this. But you'll get an update from Jackie Spry next week, who's put together an amazing spreadsheet of where all the funding has gone. And what we want to do is really create a dashboard that we would then put on our website so people can see exactly where the funding's gone. In terms of the forums, I'll just give you a couple of examples here of things that we could be doing that we just don't have the capacity to do right now. For instance, you know, at the time when we, when we gave ARP funding and CDBG funding to Paramount Pursuits and Erie's Black Wall Street and MCRC and SBDC and the International Institute and the Redevelopment Authority and Achiever's Entrepreneurial Public, we announced it when we gave out the funding. What we haven't done since then is take, you know, go on the road to the community centers, to international institute, MCRC, Catholic charities, to get the word out about, okay, we gave this funding out and now these, these partners of ours have developed programs that are free to city residents. And so and they have a forum with all of them there and say, and explain, like, these are the things that are available to you as an entrepreneur, as a homeowner, you know, as a renter, to really get the word out to folks about what's available. That's just one example. Another one is city contracts. What kind of city contracts do we award? We could be having forums about that. Grants that are available, loans, you know, from DECD, from things that we're working on and planning and public works, like to, to get input from residents, but also to get the word out to them. Also, we've tried to do some forums in regard to hiring opportunities with police and fire. Those haven't been particularly well-attended because we've had a tough time getting the word out about those. With a communication strategy, we could be much more strategic about how we do that to make sure that we're going to people where they're at and involving HR and also public works because we hire so many seasonal, seasonal employees. It'd be good to do some recruitment forums. Same thing goes with opportunities to serve on authorities, boards and commissions. It'd be great to, to do some forums about that, to explain to people what the authorities' boards and commissions are, what the responsibilities are, to really get the word out. Apprenticeship programs with the trades, that's something that we've, we've been trying to work with the Great Lakes Building Trades on, getting the word out about the opportunities that exist. But, you know, we have been, we've only seen minimal success with how we've tried to communicate that thus far. I just think people don't realize that they can enter these apprenticeship programs for free, that they're paid $18 an hour on a job site during that time, and then they, they get the training at night. And after five years, they are, they're certified and they can go on to make $36 an hour. I mean, it's a wonderful opportunity that just not a lot of people know about. And then I already mentioned things like the ARP funding, Activating Our Vision. We have so much more work that we can do, not only with the data analysis and measuring where we're at, but also communicating and getting the word out to people and getting input back. And then I think the next, the next section is HR. So I will turn it over to Eunice.
And it's showing on the summary page, some of the main points. And one of them was that HR was understaffed, well-intended and lacks some key competencies. I started a year ago in November and I realized when I started that we were understaffed for the number of employees that the city has. One thing about the HR department is that we touch every department and every employee. It's not like other departments, which is siloed into their department. We literally touch everyone from the time of hire till they retire. And, you know, take care of every employee issue, all the, all the four unions, the bargaining units, everything. So it's, it's, it's a lot. When I started, we had 3.5 employees. We currently have four HR people, HR employees, and we have moved the risk manager into the HR department because a lot of the things that he takes care of are very related to what, what we do. So it made sense to move him into HR. This report states that two employees should be added, and that was from 2019. So when I started, that had not, they had not implemented that. The next page shows Jim Fiorenzo's assessment that he did in 2020. And if you look at the very first thing, item on his list, it says at the bottom, need minimum of two full-time employees added. So it's again stating what was stated in 2019, was never implemented, obviously was needed. He also lists multiple things on this page that the HR department should be doing, could be doing, if we had. that the HR department should be doing, could be doing if we had more employees to take care of those things. That, that's his assessment in 2022. The next page is Strategic Consulting Partners. Monica Gould presented to you at that meeting a brief summary of their findings. And that also, in her findings, was to add additional employees to the HR department. And one of them to be a diversity officer. Many of the things in the Strategic Consulting Partners audit has to do with diversity and how we can increase diversity and how we need to change our policies. We don't have enough staff to do that. Having a diversity officer would be very important in helping to implement those things. Any questions on that page?
Eunice, I just wondered if you could, for people who didn't, we approved the bringing Jim Fiorenzo on as a consultant. But maybe if you could just give a nugget or two about his background, but also about your background because you came from a different HR position. And I also know, I mean, I think even in the budget book from, it may still be this way, I think it was, it just identified as personnel, but that's, there's a recognition that it's human resources now. So, maybe if you could just tell us a little bit about Fiorenzo and then just about yourself because HR is near and dear to my heart. My late husband was in HR. My son works in compensation analysis. And my husband was president of the HR Association of Northwest Pennsylvania, I think, when he died. So, anyhow, I just know how important HR is, so.
I can't speak a lot to Jim Fiorenzo's background because like I said, I wasn't here the first time. Maybe Renee can do that part. For myself, I've worked in HR almost my entire career. I worked for Penn State for twenty-two years. Most recently, I worked at Wabtec, so I have a union experience. Prior to that, I worked in healthcare as well and human resources. It's dear to my heart as well because I feel like employees are the heart of an organization. And if you have a good HR department, it's very important because it will help the company.
Okay. And I just wanted to put a plug in for Eunice because I didn't realize, well, maybe we can let city council know that there is now an evaluation program that goes on for employees. And I have to do Lori's evaluation. And of course, I would just be doing this this year as council president. The next council president will do that. But I thought it would be good for me to have some training so I do it correctly. So, I already have a publication here from Eunice on how to do this and she's going to help me with this. And I'm a big believer in train the trainer. So, the next council president will then be prepared to be able to do the, the evaluation based on the self-evaluation that the employee does. So, and I know you've been doing monthly trainings for staff. There's been some, sometimes it's hard to convince people to change. But I know that whether you're talking about, you know, sexual harassment training, those kinds of things can be done online and employees, we just have to encourage them to be able to keep up with those trainings. So, I was just really glad that you were instituting that too.
Yes, we implemented that in September. So, we have done, this will be the fourth month. And yes, it is a change. It's never been done here at the city. And the risk manager and I implemented that. We monitor it. We send out the reminders to make sure that the employees take it. And we've done diversity and inclusion. This month is about bias, cybersecurity, just things that are really important for employees. That will continue as a monthly training. And we're also going to be moving into supervisory training. A lot of the people at the city, maybe they start in a position and they just move up to a different position. And if they become a manager or supervisor, they have not been trained on that. And to me, that's very important, that that training gets to them. So, that's, we're also going to be implementing that next year as well.
And should I ask, Renee, did you, Renee, did you just want to, just tell council about Fiorenzo's background, just so they remember why he was brought on board?
Yeah, for anybody who doesn't know Jim, he was the former CEO of UPMC Hammett. And then when he retired, he was, he still wanted to continue working. So, he went on to work with JL McC and Associates and was doing HR audits. And that's how we kind of connected with him in 2019. You know, as we, we were only in office a year and knew that we had some deficiencies and really wanted to bring in somebody who knew what they were doing to kind of uncover those for us and see where we, you know, to make recommendations about some impactful things that we could do. And so, that's what he did. And then came back in 2022 to help us again. And we thought that, I just would add, we, we thought that was timely with Eunice coming in and, you know, taking over the reins, that it would be helpful to kind of have an updated report from him as we move forward.
Interrupt you though. Do you want to go over the rest of these pages too?
Well, yeah, the one that's up on the screen right now from Strategic Consulting Partners shows the recommendation of hiring two additional people and then just other cities, their population and how many HR staff, you know, they have compared to what we had. So, obviously, again, showing the need for having more people in our department. On the right is the most recent count of employees. That includes part-time and seasonal, but that is by bargaining unit, by department, how many employees that actually HR touches, which is a lot. So, that's why I added that to that. The diversity coordinator is the position that has been recommended to be in the HR department. So, some of the things that that person would do would be to develop HR policies and initiatives to promote diversity, equity and inclusion, to participate on hiring panels. One of the things that I've tried to change is the way we hire employees, the way employees are promoted, making sure that it's opened up to, to be fair and it's not just people are promoted because they might know somebody or we've tried to be very fair. So, that person would participate on hiring panels, work on a diversity recruitment, hiring and training, create and coordinate employee resource groups.
With the promotion part, if someone is qualified for the job and they've been doing the job, are you guys giving them the chance to then?
Absolutely, absolutely. They're included, yep. Conduct feasibility assessment and employee diversity council, manage the internal employee hotline. We don't have that implemented right now. We would like to do that so that if an employee had an issue, this person would be managing that hotline. Develop relationship with other DEI offices. We also want to do a pay equity analysis. One of the things that SCP brought came out of their study was that there, there's some inequities in pay with women and men. And so, we wanted to definitely look into that and then conducting more engagement surveys and making sure that that's something that's continued with the employees.
I've got a question. This is somewhat unrelated, but it's all budget. Now, like your office gets a two percent raise and that's like along the lines of AFSCME.
Right. What we did was, you know, four years ago, we said, first year is zero, second year half, third year one, fourth year two.
But then there's other non-bargaining stuff, like IT has, is mostly non-bargaining. But like the unions have, and so they kind of like parallel some of the AFSCME raises. But the unions have like a longevity point as well, like after four years and then it goes up annually that the other non-bargaining and folks in your office wouldn't get. Is there, I understand that correctly, right? Like there's not, is there any, is there any thought of letting them have, like, I mean, when I was looking at some of the numbers, because I was trying to, when Ed threw some numbers out there yesterday and I, I didn't notice them right away with your, with your assistance, getting a five thousand dollar bump plus the two percent. It sent me scrambling, looking at historic numbers on that. And I realized that our non-bargaining people are sort of left behind on these at a, at a unfair rate. IT, your office, and I'm trying to think any other non-bargain, there's not that many of them, is there?
Well, there's, that would be.
The finance office, any of the directors and assistant directors.
Oh, is that why you're nodding your head over that? Sorry, I didn't realize you were not bargaining.
Yeah, it tells us in our, if, an NB note.
I didn't even look at their department. I'm sorry. I noticed IT.
Plus, any of the, go ahead. Any of the directors and assistant directors of all the departments.
That's a good point.
Diversity coordinator, that's what we're talking about. Couldn't Mike Vought log this? Seems like he's done a heck of a lot of it already.
Michael's not in HR, doesn't have an HR background and a lot of these things are related to HR. Renee brought up the communications department. He was listed, his position was listed on that with the duties that he'd be doing. This is much more HR related, so it's not really, it doesn't fit.
Did you ask him that or how do you know he's not fit to do it?
Well, I know he's not an HR employee. We'd be looking for someone with HR experience because a lot of these have to do with hiring, training and policies, which is not his background.
This is all within City Hall, right? This is, you want the diversity coordinator for within City Hall?
I do think that with the SPC, if I was right, SPC report that one of the things was talking about career tracks. So, I think if I, if I heard that correctly, you know, you, not just that particular employee, but people would have the opportunity to sit down and say, where do you want to go? You know, like, kind of, what do you want to be next? Am I right about that? Or, or any HR department?
Succession planning.
Yeah, yes. It actually helps you plan what you want to do internally for a career. The best ones have that kind of thing. You know, this is a roadmap. If you want to do this, this is what you need. So, but I'm not talking about a particular person. I think anybody might aspire to something and say, you know, maybe somebody wants to end up becoming a planner or a, you know, a data nerd as we'll talk about later.
And those are some of the things that will come out in the annual evaluation because the employee does a self-assessment. And in that self-assessment, those things can be discussed with your manager or your supervisor when you have your evaluation. And actually, they should be done at that time. The next page is just the organizational chart of the HR department. I actually met with the mayor and Renee a couple of months after I took over the position and addressed with them the need for additional employees even before SCP came on because I saw the need for that. So, this kind of outlines what the people do in my department. And we would be able to do a lot more and be able to track and do data analysis and reports and things that we're just not able to do right now. So, that just divides, shows you the people in my department.
You got the, the fifth position there.
The diversity coordinator?
No, no, the mayor. She's your new.
HR, yeah.
And that came from somewhere else?
We had a half, we had a part-time person who quit. So, we ended up hiring a full-time person to replace her.
So, that was the new position?
Half of it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, in 2022, there were three point five, I think, in the.
Yes, three point five. If you look at page thirty-one in your book, which is right next to page thirty, which is HR, it's civil service. So, civil service falls under HR. I'm really not sure why, but it does.
I'm sorry, what page are we on? That was thirty-one. Thirty-one, okay.
So, I just wanted to touch briefly on this because I've just been learning about it since I started. And this relates to police and fire and the credit reports that are done, the psychological evaluations, the physicals. And so, I had met with police and fire and Carrie in my office has come up with an estimate for this year. But again, it's an estimate. I know there's thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand dollars put in here. Depending on, you know, how everything comes out, our estimate is about twenty thousand dollars that would be spent for all of those reports. Well, it depends on the year from my understanding because you, if you look at 2020, it was twenty-one thousand. So, I guess it depends on the year. This doesn't happen every year.
It increases when we do testing for fire department.
Tested every other year.
Right.
But police is now not going to pass. Less money over time.
Any questions about civil service?
Yeah, when you find those people and have a meeting with them, could you invite a couple of city council persons? I know you say, where do you invite, invite these persons? I've been here forty years and I've never run into one of the civil service persons.
There's no, there's no people. It's just.
There are people that we appointed to a civil service board.
They, they only meet though if there's an issue.
A civil service board?
We have a civil service.
Yeah, but they don't meet on a regular basis, Michael. And Ed Betts isn't here to explain, but that's what he, he told me.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is, we have every year, we test them every year. Somehow, we need to, one of the big things that you're talking about, including improving the DEI is possible changes in language in the civil service. And so, how are we going to do that if they don't come to the table and we have a civil service board? That, you know, she doesn't even know there's a board.
Because they haven't had, they haven't had to meet, but I, Ed, Ed can't be here tonight, but I would defer that question to him because he can explain the board's function.
But they should be meeting. No, systems should only meet when there's a problem. You know, you should be meeting at least yearly or bi-annually to check and see if you're still up to date with best practices, what has changed, what can be done that might be new or innovative, that's been done other places.
I've, I've never looked at this in my life, so I'm actually a little curious on this. Wait, is that, that board's got to be posted somewhere. There's got to be someone to contact.
Yeah, we, we reappointed people to it. Yes, it was on your city council agenda.
All right. So, you're the liaison to it, right?
I don't, I, as the liaison to the administration, yes. But the deputy city solicitor who left recommended that the people who were on there were doing a good job, but she said they, they had not been in need for them to come and meet. But I can't, we're, we can sit here and spin our wheels and say, what does it do? When does it meet? Who are they? But I think we need the facts. So, I, I would ask that, I would be happy to follow up with Ed Betts and make sure that you know what it is.
Dan Tempestini was the head of it a long time?
I, yeah, but I, if you think back to then, that, you talk about who knows whom, even though it was civil service. That's how people used to get the jobs was going before them and they were, I don't think that that's the function anymore, so.
And I can follow up with that as well.
Thanks, Eunice. That'd be great.
So, Eunice is done?
I guess I'm up. Eunice, with a smile on my face, I just keep a track. Nine times you asked, folks, two people. Good job.
So, each of you should have gotten a copy of my November twentieth memorandum, providing the highlights of the, of our budget. And I'm just going to quickly go through what was in that, I divided into expenditures and revenues. We're expecting that the expenditures will go up twelve percent and that is attributable to the additional positions that are now within my budget. Renee mentioned some of them already, but my position was no, was not included in the planning and neighborhood resources budget. It is now. We've got the GIS administrator for seventy-one thousand, including benefits, data analyst for seventy-one thousand, including benefits, and a grants coordinator, a compliance officer for seventy-six thousand dollars, including benefits. We're including some tablets or other hand devices for officers, code officers to work in the field remotely. We're including eight thousand dollars for Lord Prufest. We have some various funds for local match for grants, twenty-five thousand dollars for a match. Twenty-five thousand dollars for a match. Oops, sorry. Twenty-five thousand dollars in, uh, local funds, city funds, for a match for a, uh, Twelfth Street corridor study, which would take a look at land use and mobility planning on Twelfth Street. Uh, twenty-five thousand dollars for an historic building survey. Uh, if you know Chris Kinder, he's our historic preservation officer. He's been working with a consultant to do a historic preservation plan. This would actually be a survey of every, uh, property in the city. And then fifty thousand dollars in local, uh, funds for a comprehensive park and recreation open space plan. We haven't had a, our last plan was nineteen ninety-three, so it's been almost thirty years since we had a park and recreation plan. So we're, we're doing that. So that's pretty straightforward. The revenues are a little more complicated, because I'm, I'm proposing some fee increases. We haven't increased our billing permit fees, uh, probably, depending on what they are, in the last ten years or so. And if you look at, I don't know, you know, I'm just going to pass these around. So you got them.
Is it in the email you gave us?
Yep.
All right. You said that on the email?
Yep. Yeah, but not, not to worry. And, and I think this is even in the PowerPoint. But our, our, our office operates at a deficit. You're looking at, you should be looking at exhibit A right now, and you should be looking at, uh, the column that says budget twenty twenty-two. And I, I've, I've put together an analysis of our revenues and expenditures, and we operate at a deficit of about one point five million dollars. For a building department, you want to try to reduce that deficit as much as possible, because we get fees for our services when we do, when we, uh, we take fees for doing, uh, building permits, inspections, plumbing, electrical, things like that. And the idea behind a department like mine is you want to generate revenue and have as little deficit as possible. But we're running at one point five million dollars, and we haven't increased our revenues for quite some time, despite the fact that salaries and benefits have been going up every year. So what I'm proposing is some increases. And, um, if you look at exhibit B, and, and Victoria from the finance, um, office put this together, we're proposing, uh, changes in our primarily plumbing and building, uh, department, uh, fees. But altogether, it would be about three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in additional revenue coming in. And if you take a look at exhibit C, this is what I'm proposing.
Now, you're up for one second.
Yep.
The rental licenses went from forty-four thousand to four hundred and forty thousand? What's going?
I don't know. That's my quick answer. I don't know the answer to that. When did you, when did you initiate the rental license program?
Oh, it's.
We've been talking about it, because Airbnb is hanging over there, too.
Yeah.
I think, I think that's a type of.
I do have a question.
Okay.
Uh, and it's about as much for, uh, I guess, uh, Ms. Moore and the mayor as it is for you. I know we consolidated all these departments a couple of years ago. Do you still believe it's a good fit rolling the code enforcement and, uh, permitting into the neighborhood resources office? Or, uh, is there second thoughts on that and possibly be easier if it was split up again? So I just.
It used to be, my understanding is building, uh, permits and code enforcement used to be under Public Works. That, that's my understanding, which is really kind of a weird place to have it, because Public Works and building and code enforcement really are, they don't, they don't generally relate in most municipal governments. It's actually a more natural fit for building and code to be under planning, because it's all part of neighborhood services. So I think it's a better place. Whether it's, whether it's the ideal place, I don't know, but I think it's a better place than Public Works.
And it's just been that way. I looked at the budgets for the last, I spent last night looking at every budget from two thousand seventeen on, and, uh, the Office of Communications and Neighborhood, or, I'm sorry, Neighborhood Resources started in twenty twenty-one, so we've only had two years of experience. So, I don't know that that's enough time to,
Yeah.
to vet, I mean.
I mean, it, it's a good fit for me, because in my past life, you know, code enforcement and building has been under me. So, that's a natural fit for me. And it's not necessarily something that would be a natural fit for the Public Works director. But thank you for pointing that out. You were very observant.
One too many zeros.
But, um, you know, exhibit C just, uh, goes through what the changes are. But I, I really strong, right, right now, the budget has about a hundred thousand dollars of changes already in it. And that's associated with, what we did was, for certain permits, we added a ten-dollar administrative fee. And we're raising that to a twenty-five-dollar administrative and technology fee on, on every permit. And the reason why we're doing that is because we're investing in all this technology.
Right.
Investing in GIS, we're investing in a brand-new permit software system called City Works. And that's going to be an ongoing expense every year.
Right.
So, our customers, the people who use our services for building and so forth, should be paying part of that rather than the taxpayers.
Right.
That's what this is all about. The fees are designed to relieve the taxpayers of paying fees for services that go to the customers, the builders. So, uh, so we, we've already got a hun- about a hundred thousand dollars in the, in the twenty twenty-three budget, but there's another two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars that's not in the budget that you guys would have to approve. You have to approve all the permit increases anyway. And Ed Betz is going to prepare a, an ordinance for you to do that.
Yeah, we've seen the emails.
But, okay, but we only put in, we only put in a hundred. So, exhibit C tells you what all the changes are.
I have a question. Cause if, so some of them were like, there's a fee per outlet in a particular neighborhood home or whatever. Is that the way it's customary of it done? And if we'd seen that if I had to pay fifty, pay you fifty bucks for every outlet in my house, thirty outlets, that it would be, uh, a pretty large fee for the average, uh, for the average job?
Every, every municipality, you know, or I should say, not every municipality does it same, same way. What, what, I think, I'm looking at the plumbing, uh, fees right now. And, um, where are we? So, for each fixture, up to three, we currently charge thirty dollars for each fixture. You got three sinks, we're going to charge you ninety bucks. We're proposing raising that to fifty. I, to answer your question, I've actually worked in communities where you don't only charge for the fixture, you charge for the opening. So a sink would have a downspout, right, where the water comes out, and also a drain. So we charge you both for the opening and the drain, because both have to be inspected. In this case, we're only charging for the fixture, so it's one fee. But, but you know, it varies, right?
Cause, you know, so, like, I know what they're saying. We have had a lot, a lot of people who are out of compliance with this, and we haven't been collecting the money. And I just wonder, you know, say, for a homeowner who has four sinks and has the capability of replacing them all by itself. You, you don't lose, like, you know, how do you motivate that guy to go to get a permit? I mean.
Well, you got, I mean, it's, it's a require, you know, most of the time where you see, uh, see it add up is for new construction, right? I mean, you're probably not going to replace every sink and toilet in your house at the same time. But if, if a developer is building a new commercial building, that's where it's going to come into play. And we definitely want to make sure that the developer's paying us for the services.
I understand commercials. I understand commercials.
But also residential development.
But with the residential and, and retrofitting and, I just don't know how we do that.
Well, it, it, I mean, we rely on people to comply, right? I mean, people have to know that in order to do some plumbing, you're going to have to come in to get a permit. But most of the time, like I say, I very rarely have seen a situation where someone comes in, just a modest homeowner, and is replacing every fixture in the house. Doesn't usually happen. It's usually, usually somebody who's rehabbing a house and going to flip it. So I, I guess in summary, um, I'm recommending that you take a hard look at these fee increases. I think, given the situation with our budget, it would, it would be a good idea to try to get some additional revenue.
I agree.
Would you say?
And so, uh.
But it's on, it's on exhibit, uh, C, or, or not, sorry, exhibit B, right here.
I, I got it. Yes.
So, uh, will LERTA follow your, your, your also?
Will LERTA what?
Rec- recipients who, um, are getting LERTA, are they going to be required to?
Yeah, you have to, oh, yeah, you gotta, it's.
Well, no, I mean, under, the LERTA program, is that going to be under your umbrella, too? I don't know where.
No, it's not under my umbrella.
Let me ask you, get a look at Airbnb, if anybody had any conversation to you about that?
Well, you guys should be getting a, an ordinance coming your way. Went to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission approved the latest draft, and it should be coming back to you for consideration.
And we have to have, we, we will have a new public hearing, because the, um, recommendations from the Planning Commission, you were at that meeting that day, right? Weren't you there? I was there.
Uh, yes.
And, uh, the Planning Commission listened to a lot of the suggestions from the previous public hearings, and I believe, I'm no expert on this, but I thought that they really, uh, beefed up the, the policing, that's not, the regulatory requirements, um, so.
That's what I wanted to see more.
But you, you, if you didn't have it, you should, if you haven't received it, I will make sure you get it. I think that you probably did get it. Um, and, uh, I think that the ordinance would be ready to go, too. I just, we're so, we've had so much other stuff on our plate. I'm just, we'll get, we will get to that, I would think, early January. But we have to do that public hearing again, because there are substantial changes to it. But, um, I thought some really good moves in terms of how you let the public know that you have a, a short-term rental and the registration process and everything. I think our planning director might be helpful in this regard, because before buying a house, they stayed in a short-term rental, so. I don't know, I shouldn't put him on the spot that way, but he brings some personal expertise to this.
Oh, the reason why I asked you about LERTA is because I actually didn't loop you in, but I, you know, circulating, uh, among the team, uh, changing the fees for the LERTA prep. You know what LERTA is, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, changing, changing the fees. Uh, and so, uh, I, I will send it to you. And so that was one of the.
Okay.
I didn't know if it was under your umbrella or not.
It's under Public Works.
So that LERTA would still be under.
No, 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 LERTA, LERTA actually is done through permitting. They get the LERTA permit when they pull their bu- building permit. The, the only thing with LERTA is, and while it's with any of the fees that we put into place, is that we have to be revenue neutral. We can't make money off of it. So, the fee was originally established estimating what our cost of administering the, the permitting program was. So, I think we would have to have an analysis by finance of whether or not we're covering our costs.
You might have, obviously, right? That's right, yeah, I, I don't, so we collect a fee, Renee, for each one of these permits? It's in a LERTA district?
Yes, we collect twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yes, yeah, yeah, the city is a hundred percent LERTA now. Um, and so, everybody that pulls a permit, pulls, goes ahead and pulls the LERTA permit, just in case their assessment would rise, so that they could get the abatement for the ten years.
On taxes. So if you understand that, the, the, the fee is less than a parking ticket to obtain multi-million dollars' worth of benefits. Just so you know.
Okay.
Right, 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 but again, yeah, I mean, we can't base the fee off of how much the development costs. We can only base it off of how much it costs us to grant the permit.
We, we understand that, we're, we're good.
Yeah, I got you. Thanks, thanks for, I, I was not aware of that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Renee, would you like to wrap it up?
Yeah, I'll wrap it up. So just to kind of wanted to go over the kind of how we, how we batched together the funding to pay for these different positions. The communications directors listed sixty-five, diversity coordinator at forty-five, and then the two raises for the assistants takes us to a total of a hundred and twenty thousand there. The GIS administrator and the data analyst will be paid for, with the ARP funding, as Dave has already mentioned. The grant reporting and compliance, uh, position, Jackie Spry, um, actually came to us, came to Dave, and then ended up, we met, uh, Eunice, Lisa, uh, Jackie, Dave and I met. And she believes that she has the capacity to take on that role. So we'll be able to eliminate that position, um, and we'll see how it goes. But, you know, initially, when we launched all the ARP funding opportunities, we were all really busy with, um, the grant applications and making sure that, you know, we, we had created an application that made sense, that was going to give us the information that we needed for down the road, for when we would have to do our reporting to Treasury. And then, once we awarded the funding, Jackie had an, Jackie and Lisa had an enormous amount of work to do, working with Gary Vissecco on creating the beneficiary agreements, the sub-recipient agreements. Um, and you'll hear more about that next week. Uh, but now that a lot of that work is done, she's got some capacity to take on additional work. And so she, um, because she's been doing a lot of work in reporting and compliance, this is really a nat- natural, natural fit for her. And, as Dave kind of mentioned, having this, having somebody in this position will enable us to build our capacity to go after additional grant funding. There's so much funding available right now at the state and federal level, and we want to take advantage of it, of as much of it as we can. We're getting to the point now in various departments where, we're at the point where we really, we're having trouble applying for more funding, because the department heads and their staff are so busy doing the reporting requirements, making sure that we're following, um, everything that's in the grant agreement, that we're complying with everything. And so it's hindering our ability to work on implementation and going after additional grants. So having somebody specifically responsible for receiving the grant agreements, reading them from front to back, setting up a reporting mechanism, making sure we have all the data that we need, when we need it, for reporting, for compliance, following up with folks who wrote letters of support, following up with funders on how things are working, that role is going to be extremely important moving forward. And then the, the last page, I just, bear with me here, because we've batched together a lot of different, um, funding, um, to be able to pull this together. So, as we all know, Frank is leaving us. And so, that role, that, that position will go back to the forty-five thousand dollars that he was hired at. The marketing strategist, the current marketing strategist, um, is also going to be exiting at some point in twenty twenty-three. And so, that role is going to transition, um, the, the things that that person has been doing that has been marketing-focused will transition to the communications director. And this role will be, uh, kind of a project coordinator that will be listed at thirty thousand. And the reason why we're able to reduce that down to thirty thousand is because Cafe is going to contribute twenty-five thousand dollars toward that salary. The planning director role, um, saw a reduction back down to the original salary there. So we saved, uh, seven thousand there. Um, our business development officer, Jen Hoffman, uh, exited, and so we reduced that salary back down. That, uh, is now listed in, under, under the DECD Local Match as the grant project administrator, because that role will also be transitioning. That person will be responsible for some of the same things, the Flight Ship Fund, the Commodore Fund, the Kiva Loan Program. the Kiva Loan Program, um, the, um, any ARP, any additional ARP, uh, Economic and Community Development Grants that we would open up, and then also, uh, RACB Administration. And so the RACBs, of course, are from, um, Commonwealth from DCED. And what we're gonna do, we, we, we do a lot of RACB applications for a lot of, um, entities locally, and then help to manage those projects for them. Uh, it's a lot of work. And so, um, taking Erie County Redevelopment Authority's lead, we're going to add a RACB admin fee to our applications from now on. And so that fee will also help to pay that salary in addition to twenty-five thousand dollars that will be covered by HUD. Um, so there will be more than a nine thousand dollar savings there, but I didn't have an exact number, so I didn't wanna list it. Um, the Compliance Officer that's listed under, uh, DECD, that was a position that had been listed in twenty-twenty-two but just hadn't been filled yet, um, that will be a hundred percent covered by HUD. And that has already been reflected in the budget. Um, the Assistant Grant Administrator, um, also was listed in twenty-twenty-three, or in twenty-twenty-two but hadn't been hired. Uh, the person that was in that role left in twenty-twenty-one, and we had our hands full with four rounds of, of home ESG and CBG funding and didn't have time to interview anyone. Um, they just recently brought somebody on. Um, that person works exclusively with HUD. And what is not reflected yet in the budget, but, um, Lisa was, uh, fixing that moments before this meeting, was that, 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 uh, position also will be a hundred percent funded by HUD. That person works under Veronica Fields. Um, and, um, and then the Project Coordinator for the Burn Grant, who was just brought on in the last few weeks, that's a hundred percent paid for through the Burn Grant. Um, we had a Staff Accountant in Finance, uh, that left, and so we reduced that back down to the original salary. And then, um, talking to Deb Smith in DECD, um, she's reached out to M&amp;L, and it looks like we will have, um, about sixty-two thousand dollars in CBG indirect benefit admin funding that we'll be able to use also toward, uh, the Communications Director, the Diversity Coordinator. And then with the eight thousand dollar savings from the, the cuts to the operational expenditures, there's a savings there of about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So in addition to that, um, you know, as I said, we'll have ARP funding for the next four years. And then we're also in the process of pursuing several grants. Um, and, but we didn't wanna include all that because we don't, we don't have answers yet. So we'll, we will keep you posted on that though as well. There are grants for expanding capacity and for staffing. And, um, so hopefully, hopefully we'll be able to secure some of those as well. I don't know if anybody has any questions for me.
Chuck, did you have a question for Renee?
I'm just trying to, so these, these aren't reflected in the, the budget that we've been looking at, uh, at these price rates? The Marketing Strategist, the Social Media Strategist, that's, all these things have been changing since we got the budget, correct?
I'll answer that. Some of them have changed. Some of them are already in the budget. Um, some of the reimbursements that she has listed here. But, um, some of these rate savings are not in the budget that way.
And Renee, I just wondered, would you be able to just, uh, refresh people's memories what CAFE stands for so that, uh, in regard to the planning of, I think, Celebrate Erie and?
Yes.
Just remind people what CAFE stands for.
Yes, it's Culture, Arts, Festivals and Events of Erie. And we run, we run four things through there. Um, it's a nonprofit, um, that the city uses to be able to raise funds from outside the city so that taxpayer funds aren't used on the community celebrations. But we have, um, yes, Celebrate Erie is the big one, and then also Lights Over Lake Erie, which is the fireworks on July third, and then Sounds of Summer, which is the seven PM on Monday evening, um, concerts at the Senior Living Centers. And then the Eight One Four Concert Series that we ran this year on Sunday evenings in neighborhood parks that really weren't previously activated within the urban core.
Thanks, Renee. And I know you've had a long day. Everybody's probably had a long day. Dave, I just wondered if you could, um, with the emphasis on, on grants, I know that one of your, I shouldn't, I never should be speaking for you, but you have shared that sometimes, coming into a new job like this, it was hard to find out where all the grants were. So it looks to me like this is streamlining the position, not only in terms of the grant writing, but then the compliance. Or maybe Renee can ask, is the person to ask about that. But it seemed to me like this would answer one of your, um, ask or concerns as the Planning Director. To make sure you could, where are all these grants and who's, who's responsible for them?
Uh, the answer is yes.
Thank you.
If you, if you want me to take that, I can. We've got grants that are being handled by Public Works. We've got recycling grants, uh, state grants from, uh, PennDOT, all kinds of, lots of grants for Public Works. We've got, the Fire Department is bringing in several grants a year. Some of them are paying for fire trucks, some of them are paying for equipment, the SCBD's equipment, the, the helmets and breathing apparatus was just paid for out of grants. The, um, they have a smoke alarm program that goes on every two years. Yeah, yeah. So they, they handled like three or four grants this year. And, um, the, I, I handle the financial part of that and the reporting part of that. The police have a bunch of grants, and they have a grant, cl- um, I, I don't know what Donna's title is, but Donna handles all their grants. And, um, trying to think who else has grants.
I think this is a really good presentation though, because I think part of the message we have to get out to people is that when we're talking about additional programming, if it is covered by grants, we need to let people know who's picking up the tab for that. And obviously it's not free, but we are taking advantage of a lot of grants.
There are also a bunch of grants that are being handled out of Economic Development.
Okay. And I also think, kinda going back to one of my favorite topics, which is data. And I really think that this is just, this is an explanation that we, that we needed to, you know, what was going where and what was being cut. Um, I think presentation is important. I think getting that website so that it is as useful as possible. My go-to website is always the City of Lancaster. I love going to it because it's like, boom, I can find everything I need there. And, uh, yeah, so we, we've known, we had, I think, volunteers do the website, I think, when the mayor first came on board. And it, it was nice to have volunteers, but you need to have a robust website um, because it makes it more efficient for people to be able to find out these things, whether it's how much it's gonna cost for three toilets, or if the LERTA fees are going to be updated. So from what I take away from tonight is that we need to have a, a conversation and some information about civil service when they meet. Um, Dave is gonna find out about whether those LERTA fees need to be adjusted to better reflect the, um, the cost to the city to, uh, prepare those applications. Um, found out about CAFE. Um, we meet again on Tuesday to talk about ARP.
I got a couple more questions about some things. Are we totally wrapping up right now?
No, well, no, you can ask questions. I'm just, have a long day also. We had a long day yesterday, the day before. But ask questions, yes, so we can keep a list.
So I'm, I'm curious, Eunice, I mean, your, your department's moving from four to six. Um, you're, you're new in the role there. You had a promotion, you had a hiring, like all within the last year. And we're hearing about this DEI stuff, about the processes and making sure that, um, you know, that there's, that there's hiring panels and all, uh, that there's, uh, that there's equitable pay, that there's, um, that there's features in to make sure that the pays, like, so we, so we kinda talked about this on City Council, like, you know, how can we, how can we model the things that we're doing? You're, you're, you're the, the first on this, and you've had a whole bunch of opportunities to do it with like half of your staff turning over quickly. Um, so I was just kinda curious how the, um, you know, how that's worked for you. Uh, you know, the, the hirings and the promotions as a, um, with the suggestions that we're getting from DEI back. I presume you got all that stuff first.
Right, we only have the memo for it yet.
Right. So you had a promo, you had a promotion and a new hiring. And we've been hearing about how the DEI process needs to be, you know, so robust and what things need to be in place for it. I'm hoping that you got that information before we did, I, cause you were, I, I presume at the front of it. So did you get that information and did you get to like model it? I'm, I'm just kinda curious, like, did you get to model it with your promotions and new hirings?
I think he's just trying to say that since you expanded your department, uh, did you look at your new hiring through a DEI lens and use the, whatever the best practices that are coming out, uh, in your own department?
Yeah, and promotions, cause you had a promotion too. So you had one of each. I'm just kinda curious how that worked.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just curious how it worked.
Not on our TV, Chuck.
Yeah, maybe I should have done that outside the meeting since we have a little time, but, you know.
I did have a question though, uh, for the persons that are gonna be paid for, uh, out of ARP funds. Are those ARP funds already in whatever bucket that they're gonna be taken out of? Or is it gonna be taken out of a different bucket or out of a different account? Do we know?
That's a good question. Um, we started to look at that. We do still have some money in ARP admin. But we also have some money in DECD's, uh, bucket that we haven't used. And so we're evaluating if we need to move some money, some additional money over into the DECD ARP admin, and that's where it would come out of. So I hope that, I, I'll get you that answer soon though. But that's, basically, there's, there's money in DC, DECD admin, there's additional money in DECD. We may need to move some additional money into admin.
For the short term, we have enough in the admin to cover four years, um, with two people in admin. And, uh, we're probably going to have to take some more money from one of the other buckets and move it.
Right, there's some in DECD.
And I, I also, I, let's try and do it in five minutes. I also wanna be cognizant of the fact that Renee has been talking. She has a funeral, calling hours tomorrow and her mom's burial on Saturday. So she's, it's really hard for her, I can hear her voice, you know, so let's be, think about her too in terms of like quizzing. So we can, these questions, we can still keep them. We have, meet again on Tuesday, but Ed, what, what did you wanna ask?
I just wanna go on the record on this Airbnb. You weren't here when it started. I was president the first time we brought it here. And we could have passed it if I was given a policy by the administration. My fear with this Airbnb thing, you're not gonna stop them because they're doing it. We have to regulate them properly, but we have to have a policy that is very toothy. Cause if not, when there's a problem in one of those areas, it's gonna come back to litigation. It's gonna say the city didn't do their due diligence with inspections or whatever it might be, and they're gonna go to their deepest pocket. You know, they do that in every lawsuit, you know? You go to the deepest pocket. Who have the money are the ones who get hit.
You'll get the draft ordinance, and you can look at it, and why you wanna see the policy? I know the draft ordinance, I, I know.
Well, everything should be spelled out in, in, in the ordinance, has to be spelled out in the ordinance. That's the problem. Before it was not.
Okay, I, I am sending the, the Planning Commission a recommendation to everybody right now.
Okay, thanks. I, I attended part of the, that meeting. It was online, but I couldn't really. Yeah, so I couldn't, uh. So, so that's the other thing. We've had city grows for now three, four years, and they're supposed to be the champion of this new tech world or whatever. But it seems like they have done, uh, the abysmal service for our city and for our, our, our particular website. I guess they're, so I don't, I don't know.
I don't, I don't think they're involved in our website, but, uh, we do have art money set aside for, uh, revamping our website.
Just an FYI, when we receive proposals, the staff's looking at them. We're gonna get together on Monday and review.
Hey, I, I just wanna say something about the communications stuff. I got our city, you know, the mayor's office budget lined up. I've got Allentown here, they have a Communications Director. Um, they have a Grants Director in that office that we put in Planning, which puts their full office at four, Mayor, Executive Secretary, Administrative Assistant, Communications Director. They have a Communications Director though. Reading, they have a Managing Director, so I combined the mayor's office with the Managing Director, and they do have a Communications Director. One Communications, their, their Communications Department is one person. Scranton has an office of four. Their mayor asked for a Communications Manager this year, but their City Council denied it. So their, their office is just Mayor, Chief of Staff, Constituent Services, and Administrative Assistant. Bethlehem has three, but really they have two more part-time ones that, so I'd say their, their office really has five. Um, but no Communications Director. Pittsburgh's mayor's office.
Look at Lancaster.
Pittsburgh's mayor office, they're smaller than us. They, they, they miss my purview.
You know, did you watch the Allentown City Council meeting last night?
No, no. I just have one more city. I just have one more city on my list.
All right, but I just want you to know that Allentown has a much larger budget than us, okay? And there was, they, they had all these proposed cuts. The only thing they cut from the mayor, new mayor's budget was a Chief Financial Officer or something. I watched it. They rejected all the proposed, trying to reduce staff and everything, so. And in Allentown, I, I hate to compare us to Allentown because you know that the mayor there went to jail a number of years ago. Allentown was booming, got all that grant money, then where did Ed Pavlosky end up? In prison!
But you dismissed me comparing us to Reading yesterday. You never let me compare us. Um, and then Pittsburgh, their mayor's office has thirteen. They have two people responsible for communications, a Director and then a Communications Policy Analyst. Um, and then they have a Local Government Community Relations Coordinator, so that kinda sounds like what you have for there as well. So they have three people. I do not see a comparable city in Pennsylvania, I'll look up Lancaster, I, I hope I said it fast enough and right, um, that, that has, that has the resources that we're being asked to dedicate to this. And, and I mean, I, the word Communications Director is used in one, two, three, four of the five cities I'm looking at, but.
I hope I never hear another complaint. If you try and go after this, I never want to hear another complaint from anybody on City Council that they don't know what's going on. I talked to my brother-in-law who teaches business communication, strategic communication at Johns Hopkins, and I said, and he's also a journalist, and I said, where would you go, you know, if there was something going on in the city? Well, I would go to the Communication, don't you have a Communications Director? No, we don't have a Communications Director. I, I think that one of the, the, you know, we talk about innovation, we talk about trying to do things differently. And we, you also would have to look at the media, um, situation in those cities, okay? The Morning Call, I don't know who owns it now, it used to be owned by Tribune, it's still a pretty robust newspaper. Um, Reading, I think, got acquired. Pittsburgh Post-Gazette, they're family-owned. We have a Gannett paper here where you're lucky if you get the news even online three days later. The media landscape has changed. I'm not saying that the communications person becomes the substitute for, for the, the media, but getting the information out there is so critical today. I found a folder, um, when I met with Dave a couple of weeks ago, and Jasmine will know from Blighted Property Review Committee. Um, I wanted Jasmine to be the liaison to that because I think it's such a good learning ground, training ground, for finding out about the blight in the city and the lengthy process to have something declared blighted and then what happens to it. Um, but I met with Kathy Rosdick when I, my first year on council, and I was like, does anybody know how the blight process works? We sat down and we were gonna develop a communication strategy to let people know. And she never had the time to, to complete that. I, I found my folder. It's like, oh my God, we were trying to do, communicate what's going on with blight, just with blight alone. With, you know, Michael, how many times have you asked, how do people get these grants to fix up their houses? We need to make sure that we are letting people know how to do that. I think you need to at least let the mayor's office try this. You know, if, if it fails, we have measures now. We, we have, what was the thing in Activating Our Vision? Key Performance Indicators. We'll have key performance indicators to show if that person, that position is working. Critical, when there's a crisis management, I'm gonna tell you what happened when those children died in that fire, okay? children died in that fire, okay? We had five children die in a fire because of the daycare fire, the overnight daycare fire. We had no communication about that as members of city council. I got a call from a colleague I knew when I had been on Pennsylvania News editors, who, he works now for the New York Times. He said, Liz, what's going on in Erie? Who can we talk to? I felt stupid. I didn't even know that the fatal fire had occurred, so I scrambled and I got him the fire chief's contact information. We had the, the riots downtown, and we had to figure out, you're always aren't gonna be communicating in crisis situations, but you have to be prepared for that, and you have to be prepared for the internal thing. What did I say to poor Eunice when I just met her? I said, hey, somebody just got hired, can we, can you send out an email to let people know that we have people who are being hired who reflect the community? Wouldn't it be good to know that, you know, when Chuck, you asked, or who asked Eunice, did you follow your own guidelines on diversity, equity, and inclusion? Wouldn't it be nice to have known who those people were? You can ask her to do one more thing after sitting in negotiations all day, anyhow. I just think communication is so important, and we've lacked it, and now maybe there's a possibility that we can get better at learning our own jobs here and helping the community know what we do, even when we, when we don't do well.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just look at these other cities, and most any of them have is three, and that's Pittsburgh, and we're talking about five, so it's not because of a lack of resources being given, it's, it's a lack of effective, effectiveness or priority somewhere. That, that's, so I, I mean, I'm not saying it doesn't need to be prioritized, I listed off three of those six cities that have a communications director, but they don't have five people in an office. I mean, if your brother was looking at it, did he see?
Brother-in-law.
Brother-in-law, sorry. Did you give him the list, and maybe he would have said, oh, oh, yeah, not, you have a citizens' response center?
Well, do you want to get rid of those people? You want to get rid of the, the single point of contact for citizen complaints? Do you want to get rid of the person who's doing community outreach in terms of the people of color? Do you want to get rid of our refugee person? We're, we're doing stuff, let's give Erie a pat on the back. We are doing things to respond to the changing demographics in this community, including our, our refugees and immigrants, so.
What have you done to look at the two million proposed deficits for next year?
Ed, we are looking at that. Everybody, you guys want to make these cuts. Let me tell you, you asked how did city council used to make cuts, and I kept thinking about that. Those kind of cuts occurred when previous administrations would come and say, we're gonna raise taxes four mils, and this is how you're gonna balance the budget. You want to see a, I don't want to use a bad word, we're on, you want to see a screwed-up budget process? I'm gonna tell you again, to go look and see what the county is doing. How much money the county executive wants, is vetoing what, what that county council did in terms of his travel? A hundred thousand dollars in there for the economic development travel. We're, this is a budget that I know has been zero-based, right? I mean, you didn't go, as in previous years, and say, okay, let's just, what's your wish list? Let's add this on here. And I think the zero-based can, model can be, will obviously be followed going forward. And we balanced it with, thank God, with those fee increases, which you opposed. We all know we have to look down the road. How many people here, I want a show of hands, how many people have read PFM cover to cover?
Did you notice that we took five hundred thousand out of the sewer fund?
Yes.
And we just freely increased again? Why the hell did we fee increase it? It's five hundred thousand sitting there. You don't have any.
Can we not fight about the sewer? I want to know, how many people have read the PFM report beginning to end? How many people have read the PFM report beginning to end? Do you know?
Yes.
Twice. Do you know that there are recommendations in there for transformative change, that if we start working on it in January, we can get there? There's recommendations in there that are not like, let's take a line item and change it, but rethink how we do business here.
So one thing, you, you aren't in the room at this time, but, you know, one thing, you know, this is going back, you know, a year ago or now, but we were actually at a conference with PFM, where they presented, myself, the, the four of us over here, you know, and, you know, and we talked about things to include, you know, ARP allocations and expansion of certain departments with that money, and, you know, and you're, guys like, it's unbelievable, but that, that they would do that, but we did that, but, you know, but to now say that.
Who are you talking about? PFM or P? Gordon Mann was there?
When we went to Harrisburg, they had a representative from PFM talking about finances for city. And so the four of us were kind of BSing with them and asking about ARP stuff.
BSing is the key word.
We were discussing, oh, shut up. We were not deliberating in any way, we were in training, and we were talking to a, a finance guy.
One of the guys who worked on the Erie, on the Erie plan.
Gordon Mann was it? Can you get the name of the person, please? I'd like to know who the person was.
Probably can, if we look at the agenda for it.
Would you do that? I would really appreciate that.
Time tonight, everyone's put in a lot of time, so, as your recommendation, you know, whatever your last comments are, great to have them.
Read the PFM report. If anybody would like to read the original early intervention report, which was not followed largely, I'm happy to make you copies of this. This is why I have become such a big believer in the PFM report, because once upon a time, we paid to have somebody come in and say, you ought to do this, this was years ago, and nobody followed up on it, so. Okay, so everybody's gonna have the PFM report read by next Tuesday?
I'd like to make a comment real quick about the, about next year's deficit. I mean, we, we continue to work on that, we've been working on that for five years. If you look back at the 2018 budget, in 2024, we were projected to have a deficit of twenty-four million dollars. And so we are implementing things out of PFM. One of those things was the stormwater fee. There are a lot of other things in there, as Liz, as Liz mentioned, that we can continue to work on, and, and we do, we are, we are doing that.
I've just got a recommendation that, for council, that you ought to think about, and that is, get all your fees on a resolution, one document, so you know what they are, and then every year, take a look at that.
Okay.
And see, you know, and see what you're gonna increase. But right now, you've got fees that are in different places and different ordinances, and you probably don't even have a sense of all the fees you've got. So for the, for the next year, going into the next budget year, it would be a good idea to get all those fees consolidated into one document, and then every year, you pass the fees along with the budget.
I move, we adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.